Welcome to the 2025 Ogden City Council Debate proudly hosted by the Weber Fraternal Order of Police. This event is being recorded and technology permitting will be posted on social media to ensure those who are unable to attend can still view the discussion. My name is Derek Fisher and I have the privilege of serving as President of the Weber Fraternal Order of Police. Our organization represents officers and deputies from across Weber and Morgan Counties. Named after the Weaver River that flows through both counties, our lodge is dedicated to serving our members by providing support, organizing events, and acting as a representative voice with local administrations and city leaders. We are also deeply committed to fostering strong relationships with the communities we serve, whether through service projects, community events, or outreach initiatives. City council members play a critical role in managing budgets and resources that ensure our communities have essential public safety services. They work collaboratively with the mayor to chart the course that best meets the needs of the community. The Weber FOP invited all candidates for the Ogden City Council to participate. Unfortunately, one of the candidates was unable to attend after agreeing to the scheduled debate. The focus of tonight's debate is public safety, a matter that affects us all. Members of the public safety, as well as public safety professionals, including police, fire, and dispatch were invited to attend and submit their questions. Important dates: election. The general election will be held on Tuesday, November 4th. Votes will be emailed out approximately and arrive at homes within approximately two weeks of that date. Questions are submitted via email prior to the debate and those selected were chosen based on their relevance to the topic, public safety, and community interest. Given the time constraints, we may not be able to address all the questions during the debate. However, any questions that are not asked will be forwarded to the candidates for written response, which will be posted on our Facebook page. If time allows, after the prepared questions have been addressed, members of the audience will have the opportunity to ask the candidates additional questions. This portion will be facilitated by our event moderators. Introduction of the candidates. We're going to go from the far end this way. Jace Runivold is with District One and Flor Lopez. District Three, Ken Ritchie and Heath Sato.
Sato.
Sato, sorry. Okay. At-large A, Alicia Washington and Marcia White. At-large B, Bart Blair and Kevin Lundell. Introduction to the topic: Public Safety has become an increasingly less desirable career across the nation for a variety of reasons. Among those most significant challenges are the extension of retirement eligibility to 25 years of service under a retirement plan that no longer competes with benefits offered in surrounding states. Within law enforcement, there has also been a cultural policy shift, one that has introduced greater leniency for offenders while simultaneously imposing stricter expectations and oversight on officers. Combined with a growing sense of diminished recognition for the critical work they perform, these factors have made it more difficult to attract and retain qualified men and women in the profession. Adding to these challenges is a concerning trend to modern politics. Divisive rhetoric and smear campaigns, often aimed at gaining influence rather than building solutions, have created real consequences for both public and the professionals who serve it. First responders are increasingly placed in volatile situations made worse by political narratives that unfairly label them through unfounded accusations of racism, extremism, or association with hateful groups. Such tactics erode trust, damage morale, and distract from the shared goal of safer communities. Despite these obstacles, Ogden continues to stand out for its professionalism and dedication. The city has constantly produced officers and firefighters who serve with integrity, commitment, and pride, reflecting both the strength of the community and the leadership that supports them. Under the current Ogden City Administration and Council, efforts have been made to remain competitive in pay and benefits for first responders. However, significant staffing shortages remain and addressing them will be essential to maintaining the level of safety, services, and community trust that Ogden residents expect and deserve. I'm going to introduce the moderators. So although the Weber FOP hosts the event and puts it all together, we ask community partners to moderate the event. From Weber State University's Debate Club, Lauren Johnson, the Director of Debate and Instructor of Communication at Weber State University, and Christopher Henderson, Senior on the Weber State Debate Team, History Major, and is planning to continue his studies by applying for graduate school after graduation. And I'm going to turn the rest over to them.
Hi, everyone. So, our goal is to create a respectful and fair environment that helps voters better understand where candidates stand on the issues. Each candidate will begin with a 90-second introduction, followed by a series of rapid yes-or-no questions. Then we'll move into the long form and if we have time, community responses. And there will be a 90 seconds per response and we'll conclude with two-minute closing statements from each candidate. We ask that the audience remain respectful throughout the event. Please hold any applause or reactions until the end of each section to allow candidates to be heard equally. Begin with candidate introductions. We'll start with Bart and then move down the line. You each will receive 90 seconds and feel free to introduce yourselves to us.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you to the Weber County FOP for organizing this event. It is an honor for me to be here. Oh, whoops. Is it calling?
Yeah, just talk right into it.
Perfect. It is an honor for me to be here tonight and to share some of the highlights within our city. One of the advantages of being the incumbent is that most of you already know me. You know who I am and you know what I stand for. For this reason, I want to use this time to clarify some of the misleading information being spread by my opponent about the Aspen Care facility. First, the Aspen Care project was a Weber County housing project that would have funneled $5.5 million to the Weber Housing Authority, not Ogden City. Second, let me be clear. Ogden cares deeply about addressing homelessness. In fact, we do more than any other city in the county. We just opened the Solace Project specifically for this purpose, to help house and support our unhoused neighbors. Third, despite what has been said, the Aspen Care project was not one vote shy of passing. There was never a vote taken. Fourth, it was Ogden who led the coordination efforts to move the Aspen facility to a neighboring city, and we are thankful to Roy for recognizing the importance of being a team player. Fifth, while Ogden takes its role seriously, it is not solely our responsibility to handle the county's entire homelessness issue. This is a regional issue and every city needs to step up and contribute. Lastly, the $2.2 million Ogden paid to Weber County Housing was to help them become whole again and allow them to continue pushing their project forward. Yes, that money did come from the Quality Neighborhood Fund, but it's important to understand those funds can only be used for property acquisition and renovation, not for things like sidewalks and streetlights. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to set the record straight. I was elected to represent this community with honesty, accountability, and integrity, and that's what I've done, and I will continue to do that with your support. Thank you.
My name's Kevin Lundell, and I'm running for Ogden City Council at-large, Seat B. And the first thing you need to know about me is that I'm a family guy. I've got my family here with me tonight. My daughter Amelia is an amazing artist and an incredible actress at the Ziegfeld Theater, and you can see her art down at the Newgate Mall. My son Mason there, I get to be his baseball coach, and it is really, truly the honor of my life. And then I have my amazing support, my spouse of 20 years, Jessie. I did get sparked into this race when Ogden City spent $2.2 million to block $5 million worth of homeless service money that would have housed 25 homeless disabled adults in our city. I think it's really important. And that money did come from a fund called the Quality Neighborhoods Initiative, and the city council gets to earmark that money every single time. And it's important to have fresh perspective, decide whether that is the best use of that funds or how we can change it going forward. I've actually spoken with Andy Beatles from the Weber Housing Authority, and she has informed me that while she is cooperating and trying to find a place in Roy, they have not been able to find a facility that they can afford with the money that they have. And they lost $500,000 worth of grant money because Ogden City Council decided not to take it up. These are really important issues, important issues of safety. There are people who sleep on our streets, and I think our city can and should continue to, especially when it's laid at our laps, take it and say yes, and then ask our partners next door to do a little bit more. I think we can do that.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Alicia Washington, and I'm running for Ogden City Council at-large, Seat A. It's so great to see some new faces as we all are here as candidates tonight and some familiar faces in the crowd. I'm running to build a better Ogden together. Some of you may recognize me from in my 20s when I worked at different coffee shops around town. Some of you may recognize me from seeing me walk around downtown as I live in East Central Ogden. Some of you may recognize me as a small business owner. I own Good Company Theater on 24th and Wall. And some of you, we may have worked hand-in-hand on different community initiatives like the Town Hall Conversations On Race, but I proudly stand before you as a candidate for Ogden City Council. Some of my professional experience in this town, where I've worked with amazing resources and many people throughout this city, would be as a behavior interventionist at Ben Lomond High School, where I worked closely with not only school counselors and the administration, but also the student resource officers. But at YCC, Your Community Connection, which is a family resource center, and I worked in the sexual assault department on the crisis response team. I've been a property manager at different Section 42 low-income housing tax credit properties, and I'm a small business owner. But what I know is I live, work, and play in this community. I am a community connector. I'm a community builder, and I am ready to build a better Ogden together. My name is Alicia Washington, and I'm running for Ogden City Council at-large, Seat A.
Well, good evening. I'm Marcia White, and I just want to thank the FOP for doing this. This is very nice. They've had quite a busy couple of weeks, so thank you very much for hosting this. I can stand up here all night long and tell you about my priorities, which have not wavered one bit. Public safety, broad-spectrum housing, and even financial sustainability. But you know what? The truth is, as long as we sit up here and talk about it, nothing's getting done, and I know how to get it done. I've continued my education and gotten certifications. I got my paralegal certification because I wanted to know more about how to read ordinances and some of the legal, the contracts that were coming out of administration. I am in the middle of getting my certification in community development finance, not because I thought that would be a really great career move, but I thought it would be a really great idea because we need to understand finances. I'm on several boards, and I was even a small business owner myself. My relationships and experience as a council member has made me and shows me how to get things done, but I'm just going to tell you my track record and even things like, "Thank you for Good Company Theater" and bringing that up, but even voting on things like the arts grants and being able to give small business owners arts grants has been really important to me throughout my career. And so it shows you that my track record just proves that I can get results done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Derek. And is it Laurel or Lauren?
Lauren.
Lauren. And then Christopher, Weber State. Great, great, great. Thank you for being here. My name is Ken Ritchie. I'm your current District Three Council Representative, and I'm so grateful to be here today, working or interacting with everyone in this space. I was born and raised in Ogden. I grew up and not, kind of between the main campus and the D-Event Center. And 27 years ago, my wife and I purchased a home just up from Ben Lomond High School, and we raised five children, all of which went through the Ogden City School District. And we've loved and embraced everything there is about Ogden. Every time we looked to maybe move out of here, we just couldn't imagine leaving the mountains and the access to the trails and the river and everything that's great that we all love about Ogden. We doubled down about seven years ago and took the roof off of our home and put another level on top, and really want to make sure that we can stay here and enjoy Ogden the way that we'd like. I'm a third-generation financial services professional by day. That's my day job. And I get to work with individuals, families, and businesses, and work through the many challenges and difficulties of financial planning. And as a fiduciary, I bring that same level of responsibility to my work on the council. My goal is to always act in the best interest of those I serve and help provide advice and guidance in that space, but also, you know, making sure the decisions we're making for the city are appropriate as well. I'm not sure if the time hit right.
Yeah, I apologize. Very finicky, but go ahead.
Do I know about how much? Just?
30 seconds.
About 30 seconds. Okay, thank you. One thing, we've had a lot of these moments. One thing about me, and you know that runners love to talk about running, I'm a runner. I love to run. I'm a marathon runner, and I believe that shows a certain level of commitment. To run the Ogden Marathon, you have to train through the winter in some of the worst conditions. And so one of the things I like to try and think about is, as we're out, that demonstrates a commitment and an ability to stay with a goal and work through that and be effective in hopefully having a successful race. So I'm Ken Ritchie. I appreciate your support and look forward to your continued support on November 4th.
Thanks, Ken. Go ahead, Heath, sorry.
I'm Heath Sato. Glad to hear we have another artist in the audience today. I've spent my entire life as a professional artist, as an adult, and it's not an easy life, but it's incredibly rewarding. And one thing it's given me is a lot of perspective of how other cities work. A lot of my projects are with other cities and through their municipal systems, and I end up having to do road closures, permits, engineering, planning, go through the works. And one thing I've learned over those years, working with all those different cities, has been some cities are easy to work with and some are hard to work with. Ogden has had a reputation of being hard to work with, and it's made it hard to bring certain businesses and developers here to do good projects without paying them to do it. That's improved, but it still has a long way to go, and I want to be on the council to help that along. I was not born and raised here. I was not fortunate enough to be born in such a pretty place. I was born in a place in Ohio where the skies were always gray and I couldn't wait to leave. And we moved to North Carolina, and then I moved to Los Angeles. They let the homelessness issue get completely out of whack there, and we left. And we moved here about eight years ago, and I think, having not lived here my entire life, gives me an advantage and a perspective of seeing how other cities and what it's like to live in other cities, and that we don't necessarily always have to reinvent the wheel here. There are lots of good solutions out there, and I want to bring some of them to Ogden. I'm Heath Sato, District Three. Hope for me.
Thanks, Heath.
I almost forgot that part.
Hi, everyone. My name is Flor Lopez, and I'm running for Ogden City Council, District One. And I'm here today because we all share the same concerns. I was born in California, raised in Mexico, Sonora, Mexico, and I came here in 2016 with my two daughters. I chose Ogden because it's a beautiful place to raise a family. I came once on 2006 for vacation, and I decided moving here in 2016. No one told me about the snow season until I was leaving here. Big shocking. Today, I'm a single mom, a small business owner, community advocate, and over the years, I've been sitting in different wars, working with nonprofit organizations, supporting a small business to grow, connecting families with resource, and also advocate for those who are often left out. I believe in showing up. I believe in listening carefully and representing every single voice in the community. I'm running because I highly believe we need leaders who really understand our struggles, and I've been living it. I'm one of you. Like Angela Chuburka, I believe in showing up, listening careful, and representing every single voice. Yes, I know I have an accent. I'm no native English-speaking, but also that is my strength because I'm bilingual. I speak English and Spanish, and I can fight in two languages, which is amazing. Again, my name is Flor Lopez, and tonight I want to ask you two favors. First of all, your support, and second, and the most important, your trust. Thank you so much. I'm running for Ogden City Council, and I think it's passed. Stop, I didn't see it. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Flor. Bear with us for the timer. I'll try to get it working correctly. We'll turn us over to the rapid response, yes-or-no questions.
We'll now move into the rapid yes-or-no round. These questions are designed to provide voters with a clear, straightforward answers. Please respond briefly, yes or no. We'll start at this end and work our way down. First, will you pledge here tonight to campaign and serve with civility and honesty, avoiding personal or misleading attacks against others?
Yes.
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 Okay. Number two, will you commit to disavow supporters or groups that use smear tactics or divisive language, including calling others racist, fascist, or Nazi, unless there is clear documented and verifiable evidence to support that claim, not just personal opinion or belief?
Yes.
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 Okay. Number three, will you meet regularly with representatives of Ogden's first responders, including the Weber FOP, to understand public safety needs?
Yes.
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 Yes, and we do.
Yes.
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 Four, do you believe Ogden City's police and fire departments are vital partners in building community trust?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
100% yes.
Definitely. Yes.
Yes.
Oh, it's okay. Yeah. Will you commit to attending a Citizens Academy or ride-along within your first six months in office?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, I have.
Yeah, I just did Citizens Police Academy, and yes, I would do it again.
I have and look forward to doing it again.
Yes.
Will you support maintaining competitive pay and benefits for first responders even during budget constraints?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, and we have.
Yes.
Yes, and I fought for that.
Yes.
Will you oppose defund-the-police-style reductions that remove core public safety services?
Will I oppose? Is that what you're asking?
Will you oppose defund-the-police-style reductions that remove core public safety services?
Yes.
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 Will you ensure equal respect for every resident regardless of background, belief, or politics in all city policy decisions?
Yes.
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 Absolutely, yes.
Yes.
Will you commit to represent your constituents by doing what is in the best interest of the city as a whole and work collaboratively with the mayor's office to accomplish their shared goals rather than engaging in unnecessary political conflict?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
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 Sounded like a council meeting to me.
I'm moving into the long-form questions.
That's how it works, guys.
We'll now move into our long-form section where candidates will each have 90 seconds to respond. These questions are designed to give you the opportunity to explain your priorities and demonstrate your leadership approach. Our first question is a two-parter. It's about transparency and campaign affiliation. We'll start down with Flor. Who are your largest campaign supporters and what values or issues do they share with you? Are you affiliated with any other candidate in this election, such as shared campaign efforts or movements? And if so, please describe that relationship.
My biggest supporters are community members and small business. Actually, I'm very proud to say in my financial report, it's just people from the community. They know me, they trust me, and they give me money, which is great. And could you repeat the second part? I'm sorry?
Yes. Are you affiliated with or coordinated in any other way with candidates in this election, such as shared campaign efforts or movements? And if so, please describe that relationship.
No, I'm not. I support all the candidates. I think everyone is amazing, and everyone has something to put on the table, and everyone is an asset, so I am. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Flor. Heath, the same question?
Yeah. Most of my supporters are under $500. Actually, when the council had before them opportunity to increase the donation limit, to double it from 1,500 per person to 3,000 per person, I wrote an op-ed in the newspaper to fight against that. I feel campaign money actually has too much influence on our politics, and I'm glad to say the council agreed with me ultimately on that one. My biggest supporter, the only one I think like over $500, is a Facebook friend in San Francisco who works for Facebook and says she, quote, "makes too much money." So she maxed out her donation, but other than that, yeah, they've all been small donations. I don't have any affiliations. I've taken no PAC money. Yeah.
Excellent. Thanks. Go ahead.
So I have a hard time asking for money. My contributions that I've received are mainly individuals and businesses in Ogden and that have reached out to me and expressed a desire to support, mainly because I believe our values align and they like what they have seen over the last four years in terms of my efforts to serve the city of Ogden. And so as far as that goes, I feel like that's been, and I may be wrong on this, but I think I maybe had the lowest amount of donations from the group of everyone running. But regardless of that, I appreciate that level of support and hope that I can carry their confidence forward. As far as coordinated campaign efforts or anything, other than just maybe some conversations, you know, "How's it going? What's your thoughts?" Those types of things. We've had a few of those types of conversations, certainly with those that I know the best, which is Bart and Marcia. But as far as sharing resources and other things, you know, that'd be great. No, I think that we have, like as Flor said, we have a great selection of candidates here in that regard, and so, you know, I think that there's no coordinated efforts that way.
Excellent. Marcia, go ahead.
I've already forgotten the question.
Yes. Who are your largest campaign supporters? What values or issues do they share with you? And do you have any other coordinated campaign efforts with other candidates in this race?
Yeah, so I want to say that, you know, there's two types of supporters. One, that you have a financial supporter, and then one that you have great friends that continue to say, "Good job", and/or turn to you and say, "You did a really crappy job in the last debate", which are really good friends, I guess. But I do, I have some financial supporters. I've been endorsed by Equality Utah, which is a gay and lesbian PAC. I've been endorsed by the Stewardship Utah, which is with our climate and looks more towards our climate PAC. I have been endorsed then by the Realtors Association because I look to them to offer some great advice around how we can do housing and how we can do it better. And so those are larger PAC money, or if you will. But I also have a lot of friends and family that have given me support, small support to larger support throughout the campaign. The, like Ken, I probably talk to Ken and Bart a lot just because I think just being an incumbent and asking questions about different things, making sure that we're getting things right when we tell you, as we are educating you, I want to make sure that I'm saying the right thing. So I've talked to them a lot about different things throughout this campaign, so.
Thanks, Marcia. Alicia?
Thank you. I view this in three parts when it comes to the largest supporters, which is financial contributors to my campaign, community, and then endorsements. And financially, we've had people, I've had people donate to my campaign from $5 up, and those contributions mean so much because that means we can get people out, information out into the community that an election is happening, which is vital because the people deserve to know about elections and deserve to know more about candidates and when those elections are happening. I also want to say with my endorsements, I have endorsements from the IBEW Local 354, from the Weber County Progressive Caucus, from the Utah Black Caucus, from local businesses like Lavender Vinyl and Pearl Milk Tea Club, also from local nurses and surgeons at McCady Hospital, even all the way over to Ogden Regional, from nurses that I've worked with at New Safe, also Utah Women in Politics, their PAC. They're supporters and also financial supporters of my campaign. I love the ability to be in my community, and for, and in the last 15 seconds, I'll say that some of the students that I've worked with at Ben Lomond High School that have recently graduated have found a way to reach out to me through my campaign to say, "Ms. Alicia, I'm so excited that I, one, get to register to vote, and, two, offer you my support."
Go ahead.
Thank you for the question. This is a, it's an important question, and it's why we have transparency in our election process and reporting. So a couple of my people who have supported my campaign, George and Mary Hall, who are well-known philanthropists in the area, I believe they support me because I am, we have shared values. They're also my aunt and uncle. And the Utah Women in Politics PAC, they are about providing, they want balanced representation in government. in government. Stewardship Utah, which is a environmental organization that cares about Ogden and us maintaining in the community renewable energy program, which I'm committed to. Also, a few unions like the Northern Utah Labor Council is have supported me as well. There's an organization called the Way Backpack. They're, they work on issues facing their community. They want to endorse people who work on issues facing their communities instead of national party politics. I'm honored by that. And, you know, also, I've had over a hundred donations from just regular old people in the community that I've connected with one-on-one, that I've shared my values with, and have decided that they not only want to give me their vote, but they want to help in the process of helping share me, share my values through getting out to the community members.
Thanks, Kevin. Bart?
Yes, thank you. This is an important question because it does kind of paint the picture of where you lie and who you associate yourself with. So I can tell you that my largest contributions come from my family, um, which is wonderful. What values do they share? They raised me to with two simple truths, and I focus on these a lot as I've had my time on city council. The first one is everyone has the right to be happy and successful. And that has always been an important help decision-maker, decision, something to help me think about what decisions am I making and how is this going to impact everyone? Because everyone does have the right. Every one of our residents has the right to be happy and to be successful. And it's our job to make sure that we're doing what we can to remove stumbling blocks, not put some in front of them. And the other one that I share with my family is it's always the right time to do what is right. And that's another key principle that my family taught me. It's something that's guided me throughout my time on the city council. It's guided me throughout this election process and it always will guide me because I believe that wholeheartedly, that it is always the right time to do what is right. The second part was if I affiliate, correct?
Correct.
Um, I've had the, the, the great opportunity to talk to other council members for a long period of time, years and years. I consider them great, great mentors to me, and so I do, I do reach out to them probably more than they reach out to me because I really value their expertise and their knowledge and it's been wonderful and that's never changed and we don't do it anymore or less during this campaign.
Great. Thank you. Our next question is about law, accountability, and public trust. Flor, we'll begin with you again. Public service requires adherence to the same standards expected of every citizen. From the beginning of 2025 on, do you have any unresolved criminal or civil disputes? And are you in full compliance with the laws and obligations that you would expect the public to follow?
If I'm a bad person? No. No, I don't have anything of those. And could you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Yes.
And more loud, please?
Public service requires adherence to the same standards expected of every citizen. From 2025 on, the beginning of 2025 on, do you have any unresolved criminal or civil disputes? And are you in full compliance with the law as you would expect citizens to be as well?
Oh, yeah, I don't have nothing. A speeding ticket and I already passed the test, so I'm good.
Okay. Heath, go ahead.
Hi. I have no issues with the law. I will say I am also, and I want to be clear, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not blaming anyone else up here, but I am weird about not wanting to even put up campaign signs where we're not supposed to. I, it's, I know. Everybody does it. Everybody does it and everybody's told me I need to do it. And I'm just like weirdly stick to even the smallest stuff, so, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So, yeah, no outstanding legal issues or challenges that way. And yes, I do believe we need to hold ourselves to a standard. I would even say a higher standard. When I first was elected, I remember I got something in the mail that said, "The Honorable Ken Ritchie," and I was like, whoa, like, that's pretty cool. But also, it gave me this sense of, yeah, we need to hold ourselves to a standard because people do look to us and we do carry that with us. And whether we like it or not, you're elected, you're on, you're on the clock twenty-four seven. And we have conversations with our residents on weekends, on Sundays, on evenings, at sporting events, at church. I mean, there is just all the time you're being asked to represent Ogden City. And so you do carry that with you and I believe it's incumbent on every council member to remember that and carry that with them in every interaction. And so, yeah, we want to hold ourselves to a standard, but I would say even a higher standard, and it's been a real pleasure to do that. I've had great opportunities to get to know members of our community in ways I wouldn't have ever had the chance to do. And so I'm grateful for that and I believe that is so important.
Marcia, go ahead.
I don't believe that I have any, that I've had any, any outstanding warrants or anything on my, since 2025, maybe. No. Is that what?
The same, the same.
But I agree. I have to say that I, thank you for opening that up. But I do think, I agree with Councilmember Ritchie that we have become accustomed to, like, you don't even go to the grocery store anymore with, without, you used to be able to go in slippers. You can't do that anymore because somebody will inevitably inevitably come up to you and ask you a question about something that's going on. You are on twenty-four seven, so you do have to help and help them at that point when they are there and meeting them where they're at and then holding yourself to a higher standard. And that's not just a higher standard in our community, but as you go down to the legislature and are advocating and lobbying for things within our city, when you're down there talking to legislators, you have to hold yourself to a higher standard. When you're at a national conference, you have to hold yourself to a higher standard. And so I agree with Councilmember Ritchie on that one as well. We, we really do get it twenty-four seven, so, thank you.
Excellent. Alicia?
Thank you. Will you repeat the question?
Public service requires adherence to the same standards expected of every citizen. From the beginning of 2025 and on, do you have any unresolved criminal or civil disputes? And are you in full compliance with the laws and obligations that you expect the public to follow?
Thank you. Yes, I'm in full compliance and no, I don't have any outstanding legal issues. What this is bringing up for me, just in the different capacities that I've held in different positions within the community, I'll go back to working with clients at the YCC and connecting them with resources that extend to legal services and seeing how a lot of the clients that came, that reached out to YCC either in a moment of crisis or for their healing journey, how crucial it is to explain to them what's before them and different opportunities for them to speak to legal counsel for things that may be on their record that is holding them back from opportunities and improving and moving forward in their healing process or their next steps. I also think about the students that I've worked with at Ben Lomond, where some of them may have a record, some students that were on my client, on my, excuse me, caseload at Ben Lomond High School. We would work with their PO and they would come into the school and we would find interventions that would be fruitful for that student so they could move forward in their not only scholastic career, but also as a community member, to know that they're supported, to know that it's not a one-and-done in our community, but we have a network of resources to help them excel. And those are opportunities that I hold dear and that I take with me in our community. So if I am in my slippers at Smith's, you know, I can explain to people where they can go to get those resources.
Thanks, Alicia. Kevin?
So, yeah, I have no criminal record, nothing unresolved, and I am in full compliance with the law. I think, as I think about this question, it goes to how important it is to be a representative of the people. And I go back to thinking about as a head baseball coach for my son's team, a bunch of ten and eleven-year-olds. And he'll tell you, we've got three rules of baseball. The first one is to have fun. The first one is respect. Respect your opponents, respect your teammates, respect your coaches. And the third one is to always try your hardest. And we don't just tell them that that's applicable on the baseball field. We tell them that's applicable at school, that's applicable in your community, and that you need to always follow those three rules. And I look forward to following those three rules as your representative. You know, this weird mustache on my face is kind of a permanent smile, but I really do try to have fun wherever I go. I really, truly, honestly, respect our community members, all of them. I want to hear their voices. I want to reach out to them. And I've promised to always try my hardest as your representative to represent you and to be your voice on the city council.
Thanks, Kevin. Bart, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I'm glad we're doing this for information purposes and not for ratings. I feel like I'm on a talk show and when we finish, someone's going to say, "Or is he really compliant?" And they'll come and haul somebody away. So I'm a little nervous. But yes, I am in full compliance, both personally and our business here in Ogden. I believe that's our role and that's what every community member should do, is try to live within the confines of the law. I will say, I haven't been, that question makes you kind of think, right? Like, do I have anything unresolved? Do they know something I don't? And I haven't felt that way since, it was years ago, the city council packet used to be delivered by a police officer. And I can promise you, you do a little soul-searching or you start thinking a little bit when a police officer pulls into your driveway in the middle of the afternoon. And it took a couple of weeks to think, oh, they're just here to drop off the packet. But that's how important those packets are, is they were literally delivered by police to make sure that it was in your hand and that we had them. Yes, I fully believe that it's our right or our responsibility to act responsibly. And I learned a valuable lesson once. I was telling somebody that I liked to speed. I was much younger then and they said, "Not following the law just signifies that you believe you're better. You believe you, you don't have to do what everyone else is doing." And it really changed my perspective. And that's the key up here. We all choose to be up here and be representatives and that, we should be held to a higher standard and we should try to be better.
Thanks, Bart. Our next question is about the will of the people versus your best judgment. We'll start with you, Bart. When community opinion conflicts with your personal view or the advice of city staff, what guides your decision-making process?
That's a tough one. Not tough because I've, I'm, not tough because I've dealt with that, but tough because I'm, that's the exact reason. I can't really think of a time when I've been on city council where I've had that conflict. I can say, and this is probably the closest that I can think of, just on the spot, years ago, Twenty-Fifth Street was known for being rough and violent and unfriendly, unwelcoming. And it took a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of resources to clean up Twenty-Fifth Street, to make changes down on Twenty-Fifth Street, and to find a way to bring families, to bring individuals, to bring businesses back to Twenty-Fifth Street. And one of those was some development that's happened. And they wanted to allow alcohol. And one of those issues was, one of the issues they thought was, was we had too many bars on Twenty-Fifth Street back a long time ago and we didn't want to go back in that direction. And it was people that didn't drink, people that didn't think that that's what it should be. And it was, I could see that conflict, but I also saw the value in having those high-end opportunities on our Twenty-Fifth Street to allow those, to allow people to have a choice, to have freedom to do what they want to do. And so that's, I don't know if that's a great example, but that's about as close as I can think during my time on the council.
Thanks, Bart. Kevin, go ahead.
So I've spent a lot of time in the last several months out on doors and knocking and talking to people one-on-one. And what you learn is, is what people really are caring about, what they're interested in, how they want a representative to represent them. And I think that's what the heart of this question is about. It's about what it is to be a representative. Because sometimes the loudest voices in the room or on social media are not always representative of the community. So that comes to the point where we've got to, you've got to get out in the community, you've got to get a diverse set of opinions, you've got to be transparent yourself with your morals and values, because the second part of that question is really the most important. Because there will always be people who disagree with me, with my opinions. But the second part of that question is, how do you, what guides your decision-making? What guides my decision-making is my morals and my values. How is it going to affect my fellow person, my neighbor? And that is what I will always be true to. And I will always use my values and my morals and how I want to treat others as my compass in guiding my decision-making.
Alicia?
Thank you. The will of the people is such a strong phrase. And the will of the people is what will ultimately decide who is your next city council representative for the next four years. And I just want to stress that that includes encouraging all of us to get people out to vote. The will of the people is our true north as elected representatives, how to invest in our community, in our neighbors and our neighborhoods, not displace them. And when it comes to being in this elected position, it means having the time and the due diligence and the research and the patience and the courage to go back if something isn't being answered or if a community member or a group of community members have a concern, to pause and reevaluate and get more information and to allow that transparency, that accountability to flood into chambers or flood into emails or flood into public comments, however long it may take, so that we have an opportunity to understand fully what in that moment the city, the community members are determining as a critical tipping point for the momentum our city has. And so what that also allows is a moment of collaboration, not just with the community, but also fellow council members that we get to work together.
Marcia?
Thanks. Um, I think the first thing I want to say, there's two parts to this question. I think the first one is the will of the people, typically what we see when we have people come to the council chambers, it's a group of individuals that are coming and wanting to advocate for a certain thing, whether that's the Marshall White Center or Taylor Canyon right now, or even Chickens, for instance. But we also have to listen to the other side of that as well. So we get emails, we have people that are coming to us one-on-one. And so sometimes it's really difficult between the, what we believe from an advocacy side and what we believe is a good leadership side. I think the second part of that is that we have seven individuals on our council that we have to make sure that each of us understands where each of us are coming from because their will and their values may be different than the one that I have. And so trying to work and collaborate then with the seven or the other six individuals on the council. And then the last part, I guess there's three parts to this, is trying to figure out how to work with administration and come up with a good solution and trying to compromise. And so really trying to figure out, it's not just hundreds of people coming in and saying, "I want, you know, Aspen Cove and I want to have twenty-five unhoused individuals be housed there." It's trying to figure out how to make it all work for the city.
Thank you. I appreciate this question. It may be one of the most important questions. When you are on the city council, expect anything. And over the last four years, there have been so many moments where you have an issue that is very, very difficult and you wrestle with that decision and that discussion and, you know, lose sleep at night. You're out, you know, on the run. You're running through scenarios and you're just trying to gather as much information as you possibly can. And that's so important. We had a meet and greet where somebody had said, "Hey, man, I already, I heard that the Taylor Canyon property is already sold and they're going to put apartments on there." I'm like, "Well, where'd you hear that? Because that's not the truth, okay? And so let's gather the information. Let's make sure we're understanding what is out there." So I do think it's a great question. So what brings you back to that is, for me, it's always been try to gather as much information as I can. What are my principles? What do I see is going to be the best? What do I see is going to be the best thing for our society or for our city? And the Aspen facility is a great example of that. We had so many people coming, but we also had a single mother who lived right through her backyard. She could see that facility, and she begged and pleaded, "Please do not let this happen." And as a council, we tried to work with the... We were housing authority. We worked with administration. We tried to come up with every single way. We didn't hate the project. It was, I think, the majority of the council just felt like it was in the wrong place. And so by providing $2.2 million to make them whole, I think that was the right decision at that time, to help them move on to another area, and hopefully, Roy, they can work something out and make that a successful project there, and the county can help carry that.
Thanks, Ken. Heath?
Something very core to me is the love of learning, and it's one of the reasons I chose to live in Ogden. It's got all kinds of people here, and I love that, because I learn new things from everyone. And I keep friends with seemingly opposing views, because I learn from those interactions I have with those people. So I think it really comes down to learning when you have a conflict between what the community wants, or part of the community wants, and what you feel is right. There's a possibility that I don't know something. There's a possibility that they don't know something. But I cannot assume that it's them that needs to learn something. It's going to be me some of the time. And when you really drill down, I don't think a lot of people really have different values. It starts with the love of your family and radiates outward, and everybody... I truly believe most people want what's best for their community and their city, and again, radiating outward from there. And it's just comes down to what we know and what we think we know. That's where those differences lie.
Thanks, Heath. Flor, go ahead.
Could you repeat the question, please, for me?
Yes. When community opinion conflicts with your personal view or the advice of city staff, what guides your decision-making process?
Like I mentioned before, I came here in 2016 without knowledge of language. So I was raised in Mexico. Pretty much, all my opinions are very different, very, very different, because I was raised in a different environment. However, I have a bunch of mentors. I meet with smartest people, more of me, because I learn from them. And that is the thing I love about Ogden, is so many different ideas, and I love to listen, put all the information together, and take the best option for the community. And I do it daily with my clients. I represent them to IRS, sometimes in audits. I represent them with other institutions. So we gather all the information, and then we take the best option. And always, I'm right. It's okay to not be right, take the other option, but also explain the community, or example my clients, why this decision was made. Thank you.
Excellent. Our next question is about public safety. We're going to start with Marcia this time, and we'll go down to you, Ken, and then along and end with Alicia. How will you ensure competitive pay, benefits, and working conditions to strengthen long-term stability for Ogden's first responders?
Thanks for that question. Well, so I think I go back to my proven track record. There were several years ago that we had to make... In fact, it goes back to the previous question that you just asked. We had a lot of people in the chambers yelling and screaming at us because we were about ready to do a property tax increase. And I was, and along with Councilmember Blair at the time, we were stuck between, do we raise property taxes, or do we make sure that we have a police staff that was fully staffed, and that they were properly and competitively have a competitive salary? And the answer was yes. We made that decision. That was the start of those decisions, and since then, we have made further decisions to continue to keep those pay ranges competitive. In addition, maybe not as much as we would like to at times, but we have also tried to figure out how to fund mental health and/or the home loan program so that they can do down payments and be able to buy a house, and afford a house in Ogden. And so we have made those decisions. Again, I go back to, that's my track record. You can look at it from all those years.
Thanks, Marcia. Ken?
Yeah, thank you for that question. And as Councilmember White said, that's what we've, over the last four years, has been my track record as well, is supporting our police and fire. That's so important. Public safety is number one in my priority. And if we don't, if we don't, if we're struggling to retain and bring on officers, or we have issues where we train them and then they go somewhere else, it's more expensive, it makes it less safe. And in my ride-along with an officer, he said, "If we don't have that ability to create relationships with other officers, then it, you know, is there that trust?" So we have to make sure that we are retaining our guys. And through those efforts, we have gotten fully staffed for the first time, and I don't know how long. And with that, I just want to tip my hat to the mayor, who's made that commitment, to our police chief and our fire chief, and our former police and fire chiefs, who have always made that a significant part of the budget process to make sure we're taking care of our guys. And I appreciate Eric Young's endorsement and Chief Matthews' endorsement of my campaign, and that recognition of, we need to work together, we need to come up with creative ways to make sure that we are retaining our folks. And the citizens benefit. The residents of Ogden benefit from that. We've seen recent improvements and enforcements with some of the street racing challenges, and I just, it's something I hear so much about, and I'm so grateful for the coordinated effort of not only Ogden City, but surrounding organizations who have come together to make a difference there.
When I first moved to Ogden, one of the first things I did as soon as it was available was the Citizens Police Academy. And I donned the white suit and got one of the smaller dog hanging off my arm, and then they said, "Do you want to try Karma?" It's like, "Okay." That scared the hell out of me, but that was really impressive and left a mark on me. And I talked to the officers about how they typically didn't even have to use the dog, just the threat of it. And I believe it now. I understand that. I have a strong record of showing up over the last seven years, every time the issue of raising the salaries of police and fire. I have shown up and supported that every single time. And that's really because I recognize that it costs more to train new people, and it's not just the cost, it's the lives of the community and the first responders. When people don't have as much experience, it's more dangerous for them and the people they're working with. And the more experience you can keep on staff, as you all know, you're going to... Everyone's going to be safer. Everything's going to be handled better. And that's more important than anything.
Thanks, Heath. Flor, go ahead.
I'm always going to support first responders, always, because you have a hard job. You put in risk your life every single day. And maybe this not everyone knows, but I used to be a correctional assistant for four months. It's hard. That be you is hard. And I really appreciate everything you guys do, and I will be outside cheering up for you and supporting any way I can. Thank you.
Thanks, Flor. Bart, go ahead.
Thank you. This is a... Oh, there we go. Thank you. This is a very important question to me, because it's one of my core beliefs. I've always ran on public safety. I've always felt the importance of public safety. And I, during my time on the council, I've gained a better appreciation and understanding of what public safety truly means and the value it provides to our community. I think everyone up here will say that they support public safety, but I want you to look at my track record. Look at the things that I've done to help public safety. I didn't just advocate for it. I didn't just say, "Oh, I want to help public safety. I want to increase public safety. I want to do what I can to help our officers." I did whatever was needed, whatever was needed, even if that meant raising taxes. And it's one thing to say, "I'm going to raise taxes." It's another to get six other people to sign on with that. It could have easily turned very political. These decisions are never easy, never. But I was passionate about public safety and the value that it brings to our community, and our responsibility to provide public safety to everyone. And so that was very important to me, and I was able to make sure that we all got on board with that, that we all understood the value in that, and that that was a 7-0 vote. That's important. That speaks volumes to our commitment to our public safety officers. So yeah, I agree. Everyone up here values our public safety, but only... But look at my track record. Look what I've done. Look how I fought for and always advocated for and done whatever I could to not only provide compensation, but to also provide resources and opportunities for our public safety officers to be out in community, to have what they need to be more successful.
The answer is yes. I will be a supporter of fair, competitive compensation for our officers and our first responders. It is really, really important. Jesse and I have a friend who left Ogden Police Department, probably about five years ago. His name was Officer Jordan Guston. Jordan, Officer Guston, lived in our community. His wife was an elementary school teacher in one of our schools. She also taught, coached softball at Ogden High. And they left our community because they got more pay in Boise. And I'm really glad that's not happening anymore, but it happened in the past. And we want to, we need to make sure that our officers can live, work in our community, raise our families, or raise their families here, because that is what public... They are so important to our public safety. So yes, you have my commitment to make sure that we continue to keep up, to continue to do what we need to, to retain our officers, so that we can't, so that... Because they are so vital to our community.
Alicia?
Thank you. Yes, absolutely supportive of not only maintaining, but looking at how we can improve the salaries and the benefits. And that's through extensive conversations, extensive budgeting conversations, and getting a full scope of what emergency services, our police officers and firefighters, EMS, go through on a day-to-day basis, and what that looks like for those individuals. And I gained a deeper understanding and a deep appreciation of that with my time on the crisis response team, with your community connection as a sexual assault crisis team worker, where an officer would bring a client to an ER or to the new safe facility for an exam, for a forensic exam. And watching those officer, officers, and the time that they spent with that client or the victim, and then get another call, and then head out to that call and come back and care for that individual is really inspiring and humbling, quite frankly. And I look at the role as being an advocate and witnessing that on many levels of how do we ensure that our emergency services, our first responders, have those continuing resources and advocates present for them, so when they need to go around to multiple calls, that we have social workers or more advocates available for them, so in some ways it lessens their load.
Thanks, Alicia. Our last two questions are about community and economic development, and I'll turn it over to Chris.
All right. We'll start here with Bart, and then we'll walk the way down. What types of community or economic developments would you like to see in Ogden? For example, would you prioritize something like more parks, fewer high-density apartment projects, or some other kind of improvement that would enhance quality of life?
Thank you. What kind of development would I like to see in Ogden? I'd like to see development, a well-rounded approach. While our parks are very, very important to each and every one of us and the quality of life that we provide to our residents, we also need to continue to increase our tax base, so that that burden doesn't fall on the residents. And that, the best way to do that is through economic development. We are moving in the right direction. We are bringing in businesses, and we are bringing in development into our city that is lessening, is lessening the burden on our taxpayers, which is wonderful. We have improved over the last, I believe, seven years. We have 44 parks, and we've improved or enhanced 22 of those parks. So we are trying to do everything we can to continue to build up the quality of life here in Ogden City. We're looking, we continue to enhance our trail system, and we've done development down by the river, which enhances that area also. Our downtown is thriving, and it's better than it's ever been, and it continues to grow and expand, and we're welcoming and seeing new growth down there, and it's wonderful. When I first got on the city council, it was very hard to bring people to Ogden to develop. And now that is completely flipped. People want to be here. People are choosing to be here, and it's wonderful to see the projects that they're bringing with them, and it's wonderful to see that the people moving in that are following these projects with that. So Ogden City as a whole is lifting in the right direction, and it's because of our development and our quality of life.
Economic development in our community is really, really important. But some of what I've seen in the past is that we keep doing economic development for the sake of economic redevelopment. And what is at the end of that? The end of that is that we need to be using that money to invest in our parks and in our infrastructure. You know, when we offer incentives to the $2117 million that costs us $5.6 million annually to service the debt, that comes at a cost. And that cost is, sometimes we don't have the funds to purchase that park, that we don't have the money to invest in that community development that can bring people together, that can help form community, that actually ends up making us safer as we build those bonds and that community trust with each other. So I would like to see more investment in our parks, in our people, and in our infrastructure. I would like to see the city be able to wrestle back the 21st Street Pond, where we can go together and we can paddleboard together, we can experience the beauty that is Ogden from that space. So yes, we can do both and, and we need to, moving forward.
Will you repeat the question?
Of course. What types of community or economic developments would you like to see in Ogden? For example, would you prioritize more parks, fewer high-density apartment projects, or some other kind of improvement that would enhance quality of life?
Thank you. Quality of life is very broad, because I know my movement within the city looks differently than how community members, other communities, move within the city. And quality of life initiatives, when it comes to economic development, include investing in our neighbors and our neighborhoods, not displacing them. I look at that from a district-wide approach. With running for seat A, it's an aerial point of view, right? You're representing the entire city. So in District 1, it has different, unique qualities than we have in District 3. And so going into those districts and working with those district representatives to look at neighborhoods and see how we can improve those neighborhoods by making more transportation available, which would bring in more diverse jobs, that people can live, work, and play, and of course, have those open spaces and those green spaces. That also looks like having, knowing that our city branches out from 25th Street and not keeping all of our economic development in one space. And that would be encouraging people to open businesses at a smaller scale, at a medium scale as well, different firms. I know when I started my small business 12 years ago, Good Company Theater, we had businesses that were recreationally centered, like Mercury Wheels, that were right next door to us. So there's a way that we can diversify these neighborhoods to keep businesses there, which would lead to strong economic development.
The easy answer to that is yes. Two things can be true at once. We can have parks, and we can have density, and we can try to figure out how to have better quality of life. But I go back to something that Kevin said, and that is, is that he keeps talking about this $117 million of an investment, or... And I... of an investment or, and I encourage him to actually look at how that is done. That actually is a joint venture. It's a joint venture with the city. It's a public-private partnership and the developer. And within 10 years, we're going to be able to gain equity after that's built and it's full and we're having people there. We're going to be able to have equity, whether they sell it or whether they buy it back from the city or their portion back or our portion back from us. So I encourage him to actually look at the details. I do believe in quality of life and I do believe that we can try to figure out how to bring access to opportunities through economic development and economic opportunities. And I do believe that we can do that and continue to have parks and continue to have housing attainable, attainable housing and broad-spectrum housing. We can't do it all at once. We can't do it with, without some heavy lifting. And so I just, that's it.
I love this question because this is a perfect follow-up to the previous question. We all want to support our police and fire and public servants. And it's really difficult and painful to go through a truth and taxation process. And we never, I hate pitting that against, you know, we got to raise taxes because, so here's the deal. We have to develop our, we have to develop our economic engine in Ogden. And that's why the Wonder Block is such a vital project to what we're trying to do. That's why the BDO is so important. The improvements at the airport are critical. Williams International is breaking ground. They're bringing 600 high-paying jobs to the area. That economic development is going to help us prevent having to raise taxes in the future. It also, the development downtown. In COVID, our shopping habits shifted. We started buying more and more online. Well, guess what? When you buy something in Ogden online and it ships to you, the sales tax revenue from that stays in Ogden. We have to shop in Ogden. You know, don't go to Riverdale. If you want your taxes to stay, stay here, shop in Ogden. Go to the farmer's market, buy stuff there. Go downtown. We saw the junction, all the retail spaces finally, I think all except for one maybe, or maybe all of them now are finally filled. We need to support local. That helps Ogden, that helps our officers, it helps our residents, it helps everybody. So again, economic development is the perfect follow-up to the previous question. And I, I want to see that. And we needed a balanced approach. And it's hard to give this answer in 90 seconds, but we are doing the right things. I think we need to continue moving forward in that direction.
I need 10 minutes on this one. This is what got me really focusing on the city council was what was happening in our Department of Community and Economic Development. I did look into the details of the Wonder Block and it's not cut and dry at all as to whether it was a good deal for the city. I'm convinced it wasn't. Three-sevenths of the city council was also convinced it wasn't a good deal. That deal started with the city purchasing that property after they were already talking to the developer. There was never an open process for selecting that developer. There was no, no competition for that job. And it, a lot of the same jobs over and over kept going to the same developer over and over. And that really got me following stuff closely. As far as economic development, I think local jobs are number one, small business, medium-sized business. And if we want to bring larger business here, we need to do simple things like figure out how to work with the dog food company. I know we're in talks again because we've got, they've got a new owner. So hopefully that'll get settled. But if you bring a, a really high-end company here and their CEO is thinking about moving here and they go downtown to eat and it, that smell covers the town, they might not want to come back or set up here. So I'll, I'll do the other nine minutes some time else.
Those projects that the city already has, those are amazing. But what about our locals? What about our community? What about the small business who are really struggling? Because I represent a small, small business every single day and that is the reason I'm running. We currently have amazing programs, like a big business information center, loans for the small business, but we need more. We need to improve those programs. We need to improve only in Ogden program. We need to improve in so many things that already exist, but it's still there. That is one of the reasons I'm running, for represent those people who has a voice, but we don't hear it. Or be that voice, for represent those person who need it.
We'll move on to the next question. We'll actually start down over with Heath. Because it got brought up. Ogden has seen recurring partnerships with the same developers on major projects. How would you ensure diversity and fairness in awarding city contracts or selling city-owned properties so opportunities aren't limited to a small group of developers?
Thank you for that question. Yes, I've spoken out for quite a bit about how our former director of economic, and I always forget the community part because they did, the Community and Economic Development Department. JF Capital got the Wonder Block. They somehow managed through a competitive process to get the, the Union Station whole area development. And on 24th, near Adams, those, those townhomes there, they got incredible deals. They got free land, they got free infrastructure. And they kept going to the same person over and over without any real competitive process. On a couple of them, there were technically ones where they only got them to apply or one other person that found out at the last minute about it. We've got to do better about reaching out wider, working better with those developers instead of just favored developers. And we need to just try to get better deals if we're going to be giving so much away that we should get more back out of that rather than just getting more property taxes once the, once the tax increment financing years are over after 10, 20 years. Yeah, I, I think we can do a lot better.
Floor? Floor?
I thought it was over there. Could you repeat the question? Sorry, I'm sorry.
You're fine. Ogden has seen recurring partnerships with the same developers on major projects. How would you ensure diversity and fairness in awarding city contracts or selling city-owned properties so opportunities aren't limited to a small group of developers?
Again, one of my things is representing a small business and being involved with those. And I think we should put outside like, we have this job, you should apply. But also we need to check the background for those business who want to hire because sometimes they have, they don't have insurance, they don't have things that the city requires. And I highly believe that we can do better. We can save money. I'm very good in saving money because I'm a single mom. So I'm very good in budgeting. And I highly believe we can get better options versus that we, that we already have. I think these are the options they pick because they already work with them, they don't have issues with them. And wish, I would love to see and explore more options.
Thank you. This is an important question. And it's important because it specifically explains to us the role of city council and the role of the administration. And then let me just kind of explain that a little bit. The mayor, the mayor and the administration have the ability to, to handle contracts. They're the ones that go through and do the contracting process. They also are the ones that are, can, can purchase and sell land. However, the city council's role is the budget and ordinances. When we found that, when we thought that there was improvements that needed to be made, we looked into and we created ordinances to have a more robust, to have a more transparent and to have a more open application process. So it's, it's very key to understand what role and what, what we're trying to accomplish here. To say that the city council should not choose certain developers or not work with, that, that is not, that is not a city council role. That is a mayor role. And none of us are running for mayor. So it's very clear that we need to understand what our role is and, and work and operate inside those, those guardrails. We, we have authority to set ordinances and to be able to hold administration responsible and to be able to, to make sure that certain things are met. And that's what we've done. And we will continue to do as we feel necessary. We knew or we saw that there was a need that arose and so we addressed it. And I, sure, we can always do better.
Thank you for the question. This is actually something that I've been talking about because the, the city council does have a responsibility and they can set ordinances by which the administration must follow in the selection process. And that's really important, that the city council takes that role seriously. If you go to the, to the website right now where these bids are placed, you, it will, it will tell you that you cannot submit an application or a bid online. You can send it by snail mail. Or what they really encourage you to do is to make an appointment and come in. Now, I think this process is, is kind of intimidating to make an appointment and go in. I think it discourages small businesses. It, it makes it so it is less accessible to many. There is an easy solution to this. The solution is that we do what our community, our county partners are doing and some of our neighboring cities. There is a state website. It's called U3P, the Utah Public Procurement Place, where all bids can be put out openly, transparently. It can be reached by, by small businesses and big businesses alike. And they can submit it online. It's transparent, it's time stamped so that more, basically so we can get more eyeballs on a given project and get a better deal for Ogden. I believe that if we implement the ordinance that says we must follow this, we will get better deals for Ogden.
Thank you. Yes, we need a more open and transparent bidding process. And we need more options for city council to assess the developments that are coming into our city. And I believe that that can happen and have a more time with council when we have all the tools in front of us that we need to make those decisions, which would be that city council should have their own attorney, that we should have our own legal counsel so we can review the bidding process, what it looks like on the website with Archie in the corner, of course, that you can chatbot. But we need to make sure that we're having all the tools necessary to make these big, important generational changes to our city that will affect us now and also affect us 20 years and 40 years down the line. So we need to have our own tools in front of us, which would be inclusive of knowing the developers that we're working with, knowing why we're continuing to work with them and what they do offer to our city and have competitive bids. But also take the time to read what the bid is and that we can do that independent of the mayor so we can have more concrete and succinct answers to provide with those conversations that go back and forth between city council and the administration.
So I just want to say that we, obviously you don't read the packets because we do have quite a bit of information that comes to us. And we are able to have those conversations back and forth with administration. I go back to what Councilmember Blair says is that we do not have the ability to enter into a contract. We have the ability to decide if we want to fund that contract, but we do not have the ability to do that. So you know, I, I think, again, I go back to the, what my opening statement was, is you need to understand your role. You need to understand that we just throw out a bunch of stuff of, yeah, we need to, we need to hire two people. We have a great staff. We don't need to hire two people. If we're going to hire two people and add to our budget, I'd rather have it in our police department or in our fire department so that they can do the work and not necessarily have to sit and wonder at night if I've, you know, missed something, a line or two in, in our packet. So I, yeah, I don't have anything else to say.
So how many, how many here have found that government moves rapidly and quickly, right? It takes, it takes time. I, I don't ever want to speak for other council members, but I think I'm safe in saying this. And I appreciate what Heath has said about his engagement and his suggestions. And I, and I can assure you that they, they're not his alone and that all council members, as we have gone through this process, have thought, you know what? It would be nice to see improvement in our, in our process in this. One of the great things about Mayor Nadolsky is his experience on the council. And so he has, he has, he's been in those positions where things have been brought forward and they need to make a decision quickly. I do want to say that it requires mutual respect and trust between administration and the council. We can say, our decision would be easier. We could, we could make a better decision if we have the information quicker, if we have a more robust process. And so as, as Heath has said over the last couple debates, things have gotten better, which is a great example that the council is listening to the constituents. We are working together. And the council is working together collaboratively, with the administration to make those improvements and, and make sure that we have a better and more fair process.
Okay. We'll now move on to the closing statements. We'll start with floor and then work our way down and end with Bart. You have a minute and a half. Start whenever you're ready.
I'm running for Ogden City Council because I've been there. I've been a struggle and I know, I don't know everything, but I am willing to learn. The same way has been learning everything I know right now. The same way I learned English, a second language, the same way I've been fighting for others, I will fight for, for you. I will be your voice. I'm running because I, I highly believe as a community, we need representation who really is there. I'm always show up. If I'm sitting in different boards, working with nonprofit organization, I, in my past, I organized festivals for six, seven years. I supported Jude currently in after-school programs. So I'm always there. I'm always show up. I will be grateful if you give me your trust, Google my name and take the times to you, your resource. Thank you so much for your time and thank you for being here so late.
Thanks for listening to us tonight. I think our council needs a wide variety of skillsets on the council and that's why I chose to run. My sort of neurodivergent superpower is looking into the fine details and finding, finding where we need to adjust and, and make changes. As far as like missing a line or two, worrying about that. We've had some deals where I did find a line or two and pointed them out to the council that the lawyers missed. And, and really tempted to go into a couple examples and I don't have time. But, so my job involves a lot of paying attention to detail, having a lot of foresight of what's going to happen because every single job I do is completely unique. And if it's done wrong, people can get killed. So everything has to be done right. And you got to watch every single detail and know how to work within the system and know how to improve the system. So thanks for listening to us again. I'm Heath Sato. I'm running for District Three. Thanks.
Thank you again tonight for hosting. All of you missed a, a great sunset that we got to watch as it got dark outside. But I appreciate those who are here tonight and those who will be joining us online later on to review this debate or this, this meeting. It's been a real pleasure over the last four years to represent District Three as your council representative. I'm looking over here at my, my previous opponent who I have so much respect for and is a great community, community member. And I'm, I'm grateful because when I was elected, I thought, man, it was a close election, right? And I thought, I really appreciate those who voted for me, but I also really wanted to do the best I could to earn the trust of those who didn't vote for me. I do feel like as a, as a council representative, we do, like John Thompson said, you know, you're, just because you're not in my district doesn't mean the votes don't impact me as, you know, if you live outside of my district. And so I do take that to heart. I want to make sure that the decisions that we are making for the city of Ogden are in the best interest of all the residents. And it requires so much thought, so much energy and so much effort to make sure we get it right. We're not perfect. Have we made mistakes? Probably, right? None of us are, go through a day without making some form of a mistake or other. But it's important that we learn from our mistakes. We work collaboratively, collaboratively with those around us, with our seven council members. We have a great, great relationship and a great ability to disagree well and not be confrontational, but to, to make good decisions for our, our residents. not be confrontational, but to make good decisions for our residents. Vote for me. Ken Ritchie, District Three, November 4th. Thank you.
I want again, thanks for letting us be here tonight. I know it takes a lot of effort to get us here, and thanks for setting this up. You know, I started out early on by saying that I know how to get things done, and I think there's a difference between being an advocate, which is, you know, we want to, we want to advocate for different things and different causes, and I'm there with the best of them at all the times that I can be there. And I kind of look at that as the why. But leadership is the how, and I know how to get things done, and hopefully, you've seen that in my responses tonight. You know, compassion doesn't mean that we have to spend more. It just means that we have to spend smarter, and try to figure out how to empower our region and our local policies to be able to do that, whether that's land use, whether that's home loans, and those, those kind of things. And all of those things, put together, are things that make public safety better for us, whether that's getting more officers on, on our staff, or even our first responders, our firefighters on staff. And all of that makes it much more easy for us to be and have a good quality of life in Ogden. I'm Marsha White. Vote for me. The time runs out quickly, just so y'all know that.
Thank you. My name is Alicia Washington, and I'm running for Ogden City Council at large, seat A. I'm running to build a better Ogden together. Part of this process includes working to restore the balance of power between city council and administration, continuing to improve our infrastructure, and investing in our neighbors and our neighborhoods. First and foremost, my priority is to represent all of Ogden. The city extends much further than 25th Street or the East Bench. The different careers I've held throughout our city has given me insight to the beautiful mosaic of Ogden, while gaining a deep understanding of the uniqueness of each district. I will ensure more voices that represent more of our communities across Ogden are centered in city council conversations. When elected to serve, my job is to listen to community members and make their concerns actionable items and representative results. The time has come for a fresh perspective on the most pressing issues in our community and what we face, to prioritize open processes, to improve our green spaces, and invest in our community and in our neighbors, instead of displacing them through increases in cost of living that don't improve quality of life for all residents. Remember, you can register to vote by October 24th. Ballots are going to drop on Tuesday, and they need to be turned in by 8:00 PM on November 4th. My name is Alicia Washington, and I'm running to represent you as your next Ogden City Council at large, seat A.
So ballots will be out next week. And when I ask you to fill in that little bubble next to my name, Kevin Lundell, what I'm really asking for is your trust. So I want to share with you a story about trust and my family. You see, Jesse and I had to grow our family a little bit different. Both of those kids there that are with us tonight were adopted. And 11 years ago, and 13 years ago, we sat across from a young woman, and we asked her to trust us with her baby. And we knew in that moment that if she was going to trust us, that we had to trust her. And so we opened up our lives. We opened up our social media, so she could see back. We welcomed her into our home. We gave her our phone number, and said, please call us if you have any questions. And most importantly, we kept every promise that we've made along the way over the last 13 years, as we have had the opportunity to have Mason's birth mom in our home this, this year, and Amelia's birth mom come to our, her theater performances. Because we believe in openness, honesty, and transparency, and it is my promise to you that I will lead, as your representative, with that same openness, that same honesty, and that same transparency that I have with my family. Thank you for your time tonight, and please, I'm asking for your trust in your vote.
Thank you again for everyone being here tonight. This has been a wonderful event, and I'm proud and excited that I could be a part of it. This has been a wonderful process for me to go through this election process. I learned that Kevin and I both adopted our oldest, or he adopted two. I adopted my oldest daughter. So I've, like Kevin, I've sat in that room, and I've had a woman who is very vulnerable, and hand her, or have her hand me an infant, something that I could not, could not get without her help, something that I could not do on my own. And I, I'll always be thankful and appreciative of what she did for us, so that I could have the opportunity to do that. Each and every one of you holds something very valuable also, and that's what we're up here asking for, is your vote. We understand how valuable your vote is. We understand how important your vote is, and we ask you to hold it dear, because we can all sit up here and make promises. But I want you to look at my results. I've been your city council member. Ogden is not the same Ogden it was 10 years ago, and that didn't happen by accident. That happened by careful planning. That happened by collaboration. That happened by working with council members and administration, by, by not, not digging our heels in, but finding ways to collaborate, by disagreeing respectfully and finding common ground. And that's what I've done. We have built a wonderful Ogden, and Ogden is moving in the right direction. And I ask you to continue moving Ogden in the right direction by voting for me on November 4th. Thank you.
Let's give our candidates a round of applause. We have time for two community questions. If you'd like to ask a question, I'll ask you to come right up here. Candidates, you'll have one minute to respond.
Hello. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Alex Sanders. I represent the Ogden Firefighters, Local 552, the International Association of Firefighters here. And many of you know already, but the primary problem that the fire department is having right now is with staffing, similar to what the police were faced a few years ago. And the National Fire Protection Association recommends having four firefighters per fire engine. Right now, we have three firefighters per fire engine. So my question to you is, if anything at all, how do you intend on increasing staffing? Yeah, how are you going to do that if, if you intend on doing so?
About 60 seconds each.
No short with me?
Bart, go ahead.
Yes, thanks, Alex. It's, it's been great to hear from you, and we've heard from you in the past. So thank you for being here, and thank you for all you do. I believe it was mentioned here earlier, that it's easy for us to do what we can to help our public safety officers. They put their lives on the line every day for us, and it's up to us, as their representatives, to do what we can to make sure that they're successful, and make sure that they have what's needed to, to be able to provide the level of safety for our community. I agree. We've had the study. We understand. We put out a study, and we understand that, that there is a need to have more on a, on a call, and that's a staffing issue. And we're going to have to be, just like we were with the police, we'll have to be creative and find, be creative in finding the funds available, or finding funds, and we'll have to be creative in finding different approaches to, to address that. But as you've seen in the past, I'm committed to doing that. I've always been committed to doing that, because I understand the value in adhering to those studies, and adhering to, to the, what's, what's the proper number of firefighters per call.
Thank you for the question, and thank you for serving and protecting our community. My wife is the secretary at Da Vinci Elementary, and both of those kids went to that building, and y'all saved that building. And so, thank you. Thank you for that. And, you know, I too am committed to that process, to making sure that we, we can and need to live up to the, to the standards, the national standards that you just set forth. And I will dig in my heels, and I will work and dig into that budget to help find that, so that we can support the staffing and the needs of our fire department.
Thank you for your question, and the answer is yes. We need to find those funds. I was unaware of that statistic, that number, so thank you for making me aware of that. I do see a presence in the neighborhood that I live in, which is downtown, of an apartment complex that frequently has EMS out there almost every hour. And so, understanding better the restraints, and also the stress that that may cause for our firefighters, is important to always keep in mind, and to start that conversation now, because once, once elected, the budget season is going to begin. And so, to have those statistics in front of me, and to do that research, and have that survey in front of me, we can have those creative conversations to find that funding.
Thanks, Alex. I know we, we have long conversations already about the shortage of staff, and I am committed as well. I think all of the council members are definitely committed. We have tried innovative things, so that we could actually help somewhat like we did with the police, as far as having that kind of overflow group of individuals. So when, if there is an individual retiring, that's able to fill that position, so that we don't have a shortage. And the other piece of that is actually being able to have those conversations. We were worried that at some point in time, that the unions would not be able to even come forward and have a conversation with us at a work session, because of recent legislation from, from the state. And, and we, we said, yes, we needed you there, so that we could hear and, and hear what you guys had to say. So I'm as committed as Council Member Blair, and I'm, I bet he's going to say the same thing, so.
Great question, Alex. I, I think the answer is, is collaboration with Chief Slater. The budget process is really remarkable. When we take, when the mayor works with all the directors, and previously with, with Chief Matthew, who just had an incredible career in Ogden, and made such a difference, I think people need to understand that our, our police and fire have the highest call volume per capita of any other department in the state. So they are hardworking, they're dedicated. It takes a special person to work in these departments. And, and, and just knowing that those are, there are very real challenges, and we do need to be creative in finding ways to make sure that they receive adequate compensation, but maybe there are other ways as well to help them. It hits close to home. My oldest son just left a very lucrative career, and he wants to be a firefighter, and he became a firefighter. He wants to get to Ogden eventually, but he's working as a firefighter. And so, we recognize that those are very real challenges, and I think the answer is just that collaborative effort, working with the recommendations of Chief Slater, with the administration, and understanding that as our role in, in the council is to try and figure out ways to, to make sure that those funds are there. And again, I go back to the economic development being a huge part of that. We do need to encourage those sources of additional revenues to allow us to take care of our, our police and fire.
If the people that keep us safe aren't safe, then we're doing something very wrong. That's, that's, that's not an option. That's, that's got to be job number one. Infrastructure and public safety being the two most important things that our government do. I was happy to see the changes we made with the, with the overflow hiring. I thought that was a good start. I don't know personally what the problem is, if it's just funds, or if there's something else playing into that, but we need to find that out and address it. And if it's funds, we have to pull the funds from somewhere else if we're not going to raise taxes. And that's not an option. That has to be done. Simple as that.
Thank you so much for your question. I didn't, personally, didn't know about the issue. And like I hit say, and like I mentioned it before, you have my full support. And saying that, that does is my, in my to-do list for resources, and what we can do in order to, to our solutions. Because again, I don't know neither if it's funding, or if it's, people don't want to be a firefighter. I don't know. So I would love to make more resources, and back to you, or if you can teach me. Again, I love mentors, people smarter than me. Thank you.